This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, we're thinking before we don't have all the reasons there. But at least we're down. It's nice. I'm sure. There. It's more than. You got it. Sometimes you don't share.
Yeah.
Not on the share. I can't. I always give it there. A lot of three. But I've got to do what's wrong.
Different Christ and days. Christmas.
Yeah, we have Christmas up there. It's Christmas too.
You know.
It's like. It's not. 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 Yeah, we have Christmas up there. It's Christmas too.
You know.
It's not. 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 It's not.
With the voice mail?
Yeah.
It happened.
He was trying to. We're. Yeah. I don't know. I suggest.
No, I'll come.
Appreciate it.
Patrick and Mike, can you just a thumbs up if you can hear us?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
All right, it's 7:30. Call the November 21th DeSoto City Council meeting to order. Let's start with roll call, please.
Hunter Michael.
Here.
Daniels.
Here.
Trip. Mike Maureen.
Here.
Lane.
Here.
Council member Trip is absent today.
Okay, thank you. I would invite you all to please rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, our first item tonight's our consent agenda tonight. On the consent agenda, we have approved minutes from our November 7th council meeting, approved pay, excuse me, pay ordinance number 985, approved bid for the 2025 parks mowing contract, and approved bid for the 2025 streets mowing contract. Is there any item anyone would wish to remove for further discussion? Have a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion. We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Daniels.
Yes.
Mike Maureen.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Item 4B, discuss economic incentive application from Odo Development.
Yes, Mayor Council. In August, we received an application of an economic incentive request for 60% RHID. The project includes about 180 new housing units, including duplexes, villas, and single-family lots, and road improvements on 89th Street. Per our economic development policy, staff is presenting this incentive without comment. And Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to invite Rick and his group up to give a presentation and answer.
Certainly, yeah, please come. Thank you.
I'm Rick Odo. My partner, Dan Taylor. I go, what we like to do tonight is present to you the, our goals, describe, you go to page two of the agenda, discuss, tell you about the developers, who we are, our project, what we want to perform out there, what we're trying to do, and the site specific, some of the issues and challenges, why we're asking for it, and the improvements we want to make to 89th Street, and why the RHID is important to us and the city, benefits all three, us and the, and the school district, all three of us are benefit from it, and specifically to DeSoto, why you guys should move forward with allowing us to have our RHIDs for this site. So, page two, Dan will let you do the job.
So, our mission, we hope, is in line with your mission, and that is, our mission is to meet DeSoto's increasing housing demands by building affordable homes for families, residents, and the growing workforce, while simultaneously creating homeownership opportunities that empower residents to increase their personal wealth and support long-term wealth-building strategies. So, ultimate homeownership.
So, one of the questions that's been asked of us by some of the people is that, you know, are we qualified to build this community? I know we are more than qualified for doing this, but Dan and I have extensive qualifications in construction. I've done over a billion dollars' worth of development in my, in the last 35 years. I recently just finished up about a $500 million project over in Lenexa at 87 435, Sonoma Plaza. We did several apartment communities, retail center, grocery store, anchor retail. We're doing the same thing in Leewood. I've built many subdivisions throughout the county, and industrial buildings, so I've got an extensive background in development of all different types of real estate assets. And Dan is also, here, Dan Park, right under yourself.
So, both of my experiences in the residential development and building sector, I've done a number of subdivisions in Leewood as well, and you may remember, we came in, I think this last spring, and we, you guys passed our townhome project, which I'm currently building right now, you can see it right on the corner of Lexington and Ottawa, right across from JT's. I'm the builder on that, the developer on that. And so, you can see that, we can see our work, and that we've promised to deliver when we said we were going to deliver, and we're right on track, so no time wasted.
So, here's some developments that Dan and I have both done. The one on the top, upper left, is one of the apartment communities I did in Lenexa called The Peak. The one on the right is Sonoma Hill. The one, kind of more, the third one over, is 117 acre, another $500-600 million project we're doing in Leewood right now. And there's some other apartment complexes in there that we've developed. These are also some homes, interiors and exteriors of what Dan has built. What's important is that, you know, we are local developers. We live in Johnson County. Dan's done a lot of construction here in, in DeSoto already, and we would be able to do our own construction. We would be local builders here that would get this stuff done. If you don't mind going to the second page. What we're looking at, I think you guys know where the site is, overall, Kill Creek, 89th to 83rd Street. Did I say that right? Yeah. 89th to 83rd Street. We're going to have about 150 unit types or building types. We've got 28 lots of villas, which would be smaller homes, so we try keeping a price point along with the duplexes as a price point to help people get in. We've got single-family lots, as well as, what we call them, estate lots, but they're nice-sized homes, would be very, probably about 2,300, 2,400 square foot homes there. And we also have listed the values of these homes, and about how many children per hundred homes that this would create. So, the school district has looked at this, and because of that, they feel that even though it brings in families, it brings in housing, it doesn't flood the schools or put too many kids on, in the, in the district, that it's not going to hurt them in any way. They've looked at these numbers, and they agree with these numbers on the amount of kids, students that will produce for their schools. So, if you know the second one, or the next page, I'm sorry. Some of the site challenges, why do we need it as a developer? First and foremost, we're trying to keep the cost down by having the RHID, even though we get paid in the rear over the next 20-plus years, we'll be able to keep the cost down to the buyers now, so they can move into DeSoto with reasonable-priced housing. As you all know, cost of construction has skyrocketed. I think we're very conservative at 22% since 1920. It's, some have said much as 30% and 40%. Our horizontal costs for streets and storm sewers has gone from $1,100 to $1,400 a linear foot. We have extreme grade change. We've got over 70 feet from one end to the other, and because of that, creates very, a lot of difficulties for us in constructing, and a huge amount of cost, along with massive amounts of rock. It's virtually all rock, right below the grade, just a few inches below. So, storm sanitaries and sewers are going to cost a lot more through here, and it's one of the reasons why the current developer is wanting to sell the site, because site construction costs are just so great, it's hard to make it work. And then, of course, the city's asked for some improvements on 89th Street, which are really needed, and we think we can help with this. So, if you go to the next one. Here's 89th Street. As you know, it's an unimproved street. It's not even a full two lanes when two cars go by in both directions there. You really got to slow down, it's not a real safe street. And then, more importantly, where the bridge, the culvert is, if you guys probably know the area, it's one lane. And what we'd like to do, and talking with staff, is increase that area by the bridge to two lanes, widen the, make the street a little bit safer, and we're working with staff on final recommendations of what they want on it, but we feel like we can make the street better and safer for everybody. Go to the next one. So, on RHIDs, I believe you guys are familiar with it, the whole reason that they have in four towns like DeSoto, is that there's a shortage of quality housing within the city, and that without additional homes being built, it could hurt the well-being of the city. And so, government bodies are in favor of helping incentivize developers to build more homes and to keep the cost down for the buyer, so it's a win-win-win for everybody. As you know, DeSoto qualifies for an RHID through this count, through the state. You can capture up to 100% where of it, but we're not asking for that much, we're only asking for 60% of the availability, of the available funds. And this way, the city can get some money, the school district gets their money, and we get some as well, so we all can benefit. And all three people, all three groups need to benefit from this. The school district, I do want to stress, the 1.5 mils and the 20 mils for the school district are excluded. So, the school district wants, again, has, gets plenty of money, and with the 40% that is maintained, that's split, I believe, equally between you all and the, and the school district, or there's, however you guys split the money, that's still there for them. In the past, I think other developers asked for up to 100%. We're not trying to do that, we're only asking for 60, so we feel it's fair, and we needed to help capture the increased cost on the development of this site, the loss of, I didn't mention before, over a third of the land is unbuildable on this site, and the amount of rock and improvements to 89th Street. So, we believe that we, we fall in the right, the reasons for needing RHID. Go to the next one. DeSoto will definitely benefit by adding 180 homes within the, and you guys are, as you know, have a shortage. Echo, echo, echo. So, we're trying to help the city by increasing the amount of houses for sale in the city and keeping the cost down. The, by doing this, it keeps us, it'll be able to save the homeowners about $50,000 is what we're estimating per home. It supports a long-term wealth building for DeSoto residents. Dan and I have the money to, the land is under contract pending approval tonight of this, of this, and we have the cash to pay for it, we have financing lined up, so we, there's no issues with can the developer come up and actually do it? If you're talking with us, we have the ability to get it done, and our goal on this is to get started immediately. On approval of this, we would be starting with our, submitting a final development plan with you all, and start construction as soon as possible, which would probably be eight to 10 months out, I'd imagine, by the time you do all that, and that's when we would start, and we have the funds to get started immediately. And I do want to stress, the schools are protected, and they agreed with the number of kids, and with their percentage of the funds that are remaining, they'll be able to be cash, cash flow positive. We don't feel that this adds any additional cost to the city, and it's only a cash flow benefit to the city, the schools, and us. So, with that, if you have questions, we're here for them, or a positive vote to move forward, please.
All right, thank you. So, our task then, I guess, is to, to ask questions, confer, and contemplate whether or not we agree with the request. I guess I'll, I'll start that discussion. And then, of course, you know that the, the school district has the veto ability.
Right.
That we, we would, could create the district, or create the petition, and then they would still have the opportunity to veto, as would the county, is my understanding, so.
And we have met with both of them, so.
Yeah.
We believe we've got understanding.
Yeah. I can't disagree with any of the points you made. The, certainly a need for housing, for, a for-sale product in our community. The affordability question is like, well, you know, $400,000, you know, is.
It's the new world, that is a starter home, and we're trying to keep, and I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, that's fine, that's.
It's starter home these days, this is, I'm doing starter homes in Leewood at $995,000, we're trying to stay in just under the million dollars. So, that tells you, there's the difference.
Yes. So, certainly, from my perspective, I support your quest. The improvements to 89th Street, I definitely understand that we, those will be needed, and we'll have to sort out exactly how that, what that package looks like and what that shakes up. That bridge obviously had to be placed, and then widening and improvements to that, to that road to get safely carry the additional traffic demand that, that we would anticipate from, from this connection. Were there any other, and beyond the RHID, I'm sorry, were there any other elements of the incentive that were included in the, in the package? We.
No, just the RHID.
Okay.
And that this county and, like I said, the school board are, have to approve. But it starts here.
So, I'll quit talking now and let anybody else that wants to offer comment or ask questions do so. Couple of questions. This would be more Patrick and Mike right now. RHIDs, I thought were unlike a TIF in that school districts were not protected?
There's some debate on that, but my understanding is Johnson County has interpreted that they do segregate that money. If Kevin Wimpy's on the line, if he can.
He's in the audience, Patrick.
Oh, sorry.
Patrick's correct.
He said you're right, so the original, what we were told originally isn't correct, and that they are protected like a TIF?
Yeah, please.
Good evening, Councilmember, hi, Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore and Bell. Now, Patrick's correct, the protected mill, as you mentioned, are consistent with what Johnson County's practice elsewhere.
Okay. Second, and this is not, it's just a point that I have, the number of kids that are being quoted here, I have a hard time seeing that being accurate, because I have 106 units of single-family and estate lots, you're saying there's only 10 families of four out of 106 units?
I'm sorry, so which one are you on? The estate lots?
If you take single-family lots, you're saying 20 children per hundred, so 14.8 kids for the number of units you've got.
Mm-hmm.
The estate lots, 32 lots being 20 kids per hundred, being 6.4 kids, so that's 22 kids. So, you're talking a family of four, you're talking maybe 10 of them, because two kids per, that's 20, okay, 11 families of four out of 106.
There.
Units is all the kids that would be in these homes?
We.
I was going to say, because I know what's in Arbor, I have a lot of friends in Arbor Ridge, and there's a lot of families of four and more than 10 of them, so.
I'll be honored, we talked with the school board and asked them if they're okay with the numbers that we're presenting on the homes, because a lot, you know, most homes don't have any school-age kids, either too young, or out of school, or they're empty nesters. So, these are the numbers that they were saying that they have on there, and the villa lots and the duplex lots, because they're more two-bedroom type homes.
Yeah.
They're, we're not expecting to have hardly any kids.
I didn't even touch those.
No, I know.
I didn't even touch those, but I'm saying, you're saying that less than 10% of the homes will have an average of two kids, less than 10%. Like I said, if the school district said they're okay with the numbers, I'm fine, I'm just saying I have a hard time seeing that low of youth.
I felt the same way.
So.
That's why I asked, that they felt that when they saw the numbers, and with the percentage of 40%, that the taxes still staying there, that they would cash flow for their student.
And I can, I can see that part of it, especially with the protected mill, I'm just saying the expectation that I would expect more children than what I'm seeing number-wise listed here.
I said the same thing.
89th Street, are we taking up in this RHID discuss, actually, back up a second, are we actually voting on the RHID tonight, or is it just? No, I think, what we're doing is saying, yes, we agree, we would entertain completing the negotiation and bringing the.
Okay. Okay. Application forward.
Yeah, I think the process is, council discusses it.
Right.
And then it goes back to the Economic Incentive Committee, then comes back.
That was my understanding, so.
Yeah.
But he, he mentioned passing it, so that's where I was wanting to make clear what action we're looking at and what action we're taking. So, in that discussion, does 89th Street, as far as how much of the RHID is applied to it versus, because I know there's been a request of city funds to help on that potentially, if I'm correct, so.
Yeah.
Is that still in negotiation?
Yeah, Rob, I'd like to just kind of take a stab at that one if I could. Yeah, the, the scope of the improvements to 89th Street are, are an ongoing discussion. What we would look to see is that the, you know, whatever improvements are made mitigate any negative impacts of the increased traffic volume. 89th Street in this set, in this stretch, is unlike maybe another, another area of town that might be developing, where we don't expect a lot of dense development to occur on the other side of the street or down the street, so there's not a big need to create, say, a collector's standard curb and gutter street here, but we do need to mitigate safety impacts there. And I think there's also a desire to get some pedestrian connectivity between this subdivision and, say, Kill Creek Road as well. And so, those come down, you know, as long as the developer is not asked, because I think initially he was asking for city funding help with those improvements, but I don't think now he is. And so, as long as he's not asking for a city help on that, then it just comes down to a matter of Joe, and developer, developer's engineer, and myself having a look at, and within the subdivision approval process and zoning approvals, make sure that negative impact is mitigated.
So, is that correct, in that you're not asking for city funds in the?
We're, one, I'd like to say we're still talking with the staff on what it is and what the exact needs of the roads are, but I know we're willing to commit a million dollars towards it. When we did the original assessment, the amount that we would normally be responsible for is far, far.
that road to get safely carry the additional traffic demand that we would anticipate from, from this connection. Were there any other, beyond the RHID, I'm sorry, were there any other elements of the incentive that were included in the, in the package?
No, just the RHID.
Okay.
And that this county and like I said, school board are, have to approve. But it starts here.
So I'll quit talking now and let anybody else that wants to offer comment or ask questions, do so. Couple of questions. This would be more Patrick and Mike right now. RHIDs, I thought were unlike a TIP in that school districts were not protected.
There's some debate on that, but my understanding is Johnson County has interpreted that they do segregate that money. If Kevin Wimpy's on the line.
He's in the audience, Patrick.
Oh, sorry.
Patrick's correct.
He said, you're right. So the original, what we were told originally isn't correct and that they are protected like a TIP.
Good evening, council member. Hi, Kevin Wimpy with Gilmore and Bell. Now, Patrick's correct. The protected mill evs you mentioned are consistent with what Johnson County's practice elsewhere.
Okay. Second, and this is not, it's just a point that I have, the number of kids that are being quoted here, I have a hard time seeing that being accurate because I have 106 units of single family and estate lots. You're saying there's only 10 families of four out of 106 units?
I'm sorry. So which one are you on? The state lots?
If you take single family lots, you're saying 20 children per hundred, so 14.8 kids for the number of units you've got.
Mm-hmm.
The state lots, 32 lots being 20 kids per hundred being 6.4 kids. So that's 22 kids. So you're talking a family of four, you're talking maybe 10 of them because two kids per, that's 20, okay, 11 families of four out of 106.
There.
Units is all the kids that would be in these homes. I was gonna say, because I know what's in Arbor, I have a lot of friends in Arbor Ridge and there's a lot of families of four and more than 10 of them. So.
I'll be honored, we talked with the school board and asked them if they're okay with the numbers that we're presenting on the homes because a lot, you know, most homes don't have any school age kids, either too young or out of school or they're empty nesters. So these are the numbers that they were saying that they have on there. And the villa lots and the duplex lots, because they're more two bedroom type homes.
Yeah.
They're, we're not expecting to have hardly any kids. No, I know.
I didn't even touch those. But I'm saying, you're saying that less than 10% of the homes will have an average of two kids, less than 10%. Like I said, if the school district said they're okay with the numbers, I'm fine. I'm just saying I have a hard time seeing that low of youth.
I felt the same way.
So.
That's why I asked it. They felt that when they saw the numbers and with the percentage of 40% of the taxes still staying there, that they would cash flow for their student.
And I can, I can see that part of it, especially with the protected mill. I'm just saying the expectation that I would expect more children than what I'm seeing number wise listed here.
I said the same thing.
89th Street, are we taking up in this RHID discuss, actually back up a second. Are we actually voting on the RHID tonight or is it?
No. What we're doing is saying, yes, we agree, we would entertain completing the negotiation and bringing the consent application forward.
Yeah, I think the process is, council discusses it and then it goes back to the Economic Incentive Committee. It then comes back.
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
But he mentioned passing it. So that's where I was wanting to make clear what action we're looking at and what action we're taking. So in that discussion, does 89th Street, as far as how much of the RHID is applied to it versus, because I know there's been a request of city funds to help on that potentially, if I'm correct. So is that still in negotiation?
Yeah, Rob, I'd like to just kind of take a stab at that one if I could. Yeah, the, the scope of the improvements to 89th Street are, are an ongoing discussion. What we would look to see is that the, you know, whatever improvements are made mitigate any negative impacts of the increased traffic volume. 89th Street in this set, in this stretch is unlike maybe another, another area of town that might be developing where we don't expect a lot of dense development to occur on the other side of the street or down the street. So there's not a big need to create, say, a collector standard curb and gutter street here, but we do need to mitigate safety impacts there. And I think there's also a desire to get some pedestrian connectivity between this subdivision and say Kill Creek Road as well. And so those come down, you know, as long as the developer is not asked, because I think initially he was asking for city funding help with those improvements, but I don't think now he is. And so as long as he's not asking for a city help on that, then it just comes down to a matter of Joe and developer, developers engineer and myself having a look at and within the subdivision approval process and zoning approvals, make sure that negative impact is mitigated.
So is that correct in that you're not asking for city funds in the?
Well, one I'd like to say, we're still talking with staff on what it is and what the exact needs of the roads are, but I know we're willing to commit a million dollars towards it. When we did the original assessment, the amount that we would normally be responsible for is far, far less than that, but we're willing to put some towards this so that, you know, we don't, we need to work with staff exactly like you're saying, we're not sure exactly what.
What mitigation is.
Yes. You know, you know, it was one, one thing if you go to a major, well, a collector street which doesn't need it, I mean, you don't even have that on 83rd Street that has 10 times the amount of traffic that this will ever have. And so.
And that'll come back in the final RHID request as far as what that is as far as the agreement.
Yeah, we'll have a development agreement that will be brought back. That's what we will approve when we will pass the petition to create the RHID. All of these boxes will be checked. But this is to give assurance to the developer that we want to go forward and negotiate and make to come to that point.
My, my last item is more comments and not questions. And that's the fact that I'm supportive of the RHID situations. I'm supportive of this. We do have infrastructure challenges that a lot of other cities don't have. It's not 100%. That's one reason we passed a resolution or ordinance allowing us to not do the 100% as far as the kind of home rule option there. We need single family. One of the biggest questions we get, one of the biggest questions I guess, what about single family, especially for sale product? Arbor Ridge has been a great community that's been developing, but at the same time realizing that when you're looking at incentive, it's not just the immediate incentive you get because as these homes fill up and you're looking at 150, 160 lots with people, those are also people that are spending taxes in DeSoto. So if it doesn't develop, you're not gaining the percentage, 40% that you would be getting, plus you're not getting the taxes, plus you're not getting. So there's other things like we were seeing with Passaic and the TIP where the development here creates other revenues outside of the incentive that's being given as well that offset.
Thank you.
So it's a product we do need. Any other comments?
Couple of things. You know, I, I think it's a very well planned out development. I think the mix of housing types are filling a variety of needs in the community. So I really appreciate that you included a mix of types for people at different price points, different places in their life and fills several needs in the community. So I, I think it's well planned for what we need. I'm, I'm okay with RHID in general. Back to process, do we get a cost benefit report? And that, will that be before, that'll be for the next review?
Really, my only question is the 25 years more so than the, than the split. And how, what's the economic, what's the financial model that's associated with it? That justifies the 25 year over 20 or whatever time horizon might, might otherwise be applied. But that'll play out in the financial model.
Correct. That's correct.
And then the sewer benefit district that's contemplated for the area, that would be necessary to serve this, correct? Or will this tie directly into existing sewers through Arbor Ridge?
Part of them will tie into existing. Part of them are going to have to go into our grinder system to get it to a lift station to get it to move unless a benefit district is brought into us. And right now, we said we would, if there's one created, we're willing to work with whomever to get this done. We can put that on phase two because this is going to be a multi-phase project. It'll take us about four years to build. So we can slow roll as long as we can before that site has to commit to either a pump station or connecting to the local sewer.
You go either way. I guess is this.
We prefer to go.
Is this dependent upon the benefit district sewer or?
No, we'll go either way. We prefer to be part of the sewer district. It's far easier for everybody.
Okay. That would be my preference as well, that we would have it on the gravity system.
Yeah. Yeah, I was curious what your thinking was on the, you're intending to stand alone or not be a part of, but you're obviously.
The Grotta is a process about, about their district, they're, they're talking about putting together, that's the land that's just to the.
North.
South of this, right?
South, sorry.
Yeah, your maps.
Yeah.
To the left.
Took me a little bit to figure.
I'm not sure where they are. They have, they should come and listen and talk to us about.
Yeah. No, I, I like, I appreciate the project. I think it, it fits and even community, it's all I have there.
Thank you. Anything over here, Danny?
I'm not a big fan of the, of the RHID. I'm not. But how far is this strip that on 89th Street? How, what's the length of this? Do you know?
It's a little over a half a mile.
Half a mile.
And if Joe wants to answer that one, that's just to our entrance and then it just, that's part of the reason why we have, having the discussion, but at least a half a mile worth, would you say, Joe?
Yeah. Okay. And you said the school, you talked with people at the school and they were in favor of what you presented so far with these numbers.
So far, and they do have the right to veto this in case they don't agree with the numbers or feel like they can't cash flow their schools.
Okay. That's all I have there.
Victoria?
I like it because it's like homes and stuff and that's what we need, that's what people want. But those prices, I'm like.
Without them, it adds another 50, $70,000 a house.
No, I, I understand what you're saying. Mind blown by the cost of what it costs, I guess.
Yeah. All right.
Looks a little rough for a starter home is what I'd say too.
That's the, that's the.
That's the going rate, yeah.
Unfortunately, that's.
When you say starter, do you mean like in like a new build or like, when you say starter home?
To me, a starter home is something that, it's like a first home for someone to buy, a young couple to buy. However, their first home, their, their first home, first home, however, what we've seen is first home for some people is also the same thing that seniors want to downsize to. So they get rid of their 30 or 40 year old home and now they have all new appliances, nicer looking. It's, they're not, they're not saving money. Matter of fact, they're still putting money in the deal, which is blowing a lot of seniors away. But we're, we're, we're seeing that. I, at all, all levels of the city, we're seeing that.
But then that opens up those homes to.
Right.
The market for, that might be at a little bit lower price.
Right.
So it serves a function.
Starter homes are basically as small as you can build them and as inexpensively as you can build them. There's no real definition, but.
And in the general rule of thumb, Mayor, basically what you just mentioned is, is that resale will always be cheaper than new builds, always. I'm not sure if there's a case out there that would disprove that.
Yeah.
So you're right. If somebody moves into this neighborhood and they, they sell their house, that, that allows for a cheaper home to come onto the market if they move over to, you know, our place.
Right.
So.
So as far as action, have we been doing a vote, a thumbs up? What have we been doing, Mike?
No, council, this, remember, this is just an introductory discussion. So really, this is just kind of direction for the committee to continue the discussion.
So I haven't heard anything from anybody that would take us off task. So I would say that I would be comfortable that we should move to the next step and iron out what improvements to 89th Street might look like and, and get you to that RHID petition stage.
Can I say something else, Mayor?
Please.
I would feel more comfortable with that being 20 instead of 25 too. That bothered me a little bit, why it was 25.
One of the reasons is that we would drop down to 60%. You know, most people would ask 80 and 100% and they might be able to go 20 years, but since we dropped down to 60 to recover, recover that time value of money, we need the full amount of time. Otherwise, we just can't recover it all. We might need to have more upfront and I was trying to keep the number upfront so that the city and the, and the school districts can cash flow.
Okay.
Okay. I have copy of his notes, I'll share with Mike in case he missed something.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
And we hope to submit in the next 30 to 45 days to you all.
Very good. Look forward to it. Thank you, gentlemen. Item C, consider issuance of industrial revenue bonds and tax abatements for Intervet Inc.
Believe Patrick is going to take the lead on this, but maybe Kevin Wimpy, I'm not sure.
Yes. Council, just a little bit of background, some of you may not be aware, but Intervet first came to the city around 99, 1999, 2000 to build their campus. Back then, we, the city authorized a 75% tax abatement. And since that time, seems like almost every year, we've been presented with additional requests for IRBs and tax abatement. Each time those have been presented to you, you've approved at the 75% level. This year, the $50 million being requested in IRBs, the request by the company is that you authorize an 85% of. So Jeff White, given the request, Jeff White ran a cost benefit analysis at the level of 75%, which you've historically done, and 85%. I did include as part of the packet, an email from Rudy B.C., Intervet's counsel. I, I think maybe Ron Wilmes wrote it, but providing their justification for the additional abatement request at 85%. So we really just need to, I guess, decide what level. And then the, the documents that are include, attached to my memo are the typical, the resolution and then the ordinance, which approves the pilot agreement. So stand for any questions.
Questions for Patrick?
Mayor, if I would, just clarification, this has a public hearing involved in it as well.
Right.
Turned up the, I think you got a note, Patrick and Mike, that they're hard of hearing, they're hard to hear you on the live feed. Just give another mic check, real fast. We can hear you in the room, but turned up the volume. Not sure.
Sorry about that. So yes, we will need to convene into a public hearing and allow public comment and then take action after the public is closed.
Okay. All right. So with that introduction, then I will now officially open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to offer comment on the IRB and tax abatement for Merck, please come forward and state your name and address. I'm not seeing any takers, so I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm still getting the same.
Message.
Something, we have a technical issue, probably getting through to the YouTube stream or something, but.
I don't know.
The, the GoToMeet, I think is obviously working good, but the YouTube.
YouTube stream may not be.
Getting the, yeah, the audio from the remote speakers, so.
We'll post the GoToMeeting if that's, if that's the case.
Okay.
Okay. Go back to the agenda, sorry about that.
All right. So now it's up for us to discuss the incentive request, comments or questions from council. How do we feel about 85 from 75?
I, I don't particularly have a problem with it. I, you know, I think in the letter where they talk about a lot of the contributions that they're making to the, the community and good corporate partner that they've been, the notoriety that they bring to DeSoto in terms of a high tech, high tech manufacturing. I don't see a huge downside to it, so I don't, I don't have a negative perception.
The cost benefit analysis shows benefit either way. And I, I guess they've been doing this so long that every year, the 50 million they add, we've got 50 million coming off the other side, right? So is that a fair statement? Hey, Mike, how large of a taxpayer are they in our community already?
Uh, yeah, they are the single largest taxpayer or, or were until the Flint building, we started collecting pilot from the, the new Flint building, but.
I was gonna say, I thought Flint displaced them, but beyond that, I thought they were our largest where.
Yes, yes, they are.
Even with this abatement, they are still our largest taxpayer that is very active in the community with community involvement, whether it be the schools, sponsorships, things like that as well. So I, I do not have a problem with it and we're still making substantial on them and will continue to as each one rolls off.
Kevin, do you recall, like in our incentive matrix, how, how does this? I mean, I know that we probably didn't specifically address this piece. Do you?
It's a great question and I would, I would have to pull it up. I don't know if, I don't know if we put in the matrix just what it was, it's probably, that's a great question.
I, I had the thought, question earlier and I then.
Look it up.
Or something, I didn't get a chance to look that up earlier today, but.
Mike, can you call, can you?
Yeah. Now.
Pull the matrix out.
Actually, it looks like with the latest revisions, we've left the Merck campus.
Well, I know we probably left Merck out, but it would be similar to the, I, I don't know what would be. So what was Flint?
Already, already incentivized at 75%.
What's a comparable property? What was Flint?
Uh, oh, Flint was 85.
Yeah.
80 to 85, depending on the use. Remember, we had the warehouse and distinction between.
Yeah. That, that's, that's enough, that answers my question. Thank you, Mike.
Sure.
Danny? Comments?
I'm sorry, I just don't believe the, that we should go up to 85 or 80. I think 75 would be sufficient for them. But that's my feelings and, you know, we've tried to cut down some of these incentive requests and, you know, I know they've been a good partner to the city, but, you know, we've got to stick to what we do too and be diligent to our people here in the city and we can't give everything away. But that's just my opinion and, you know, that's what it is. I think that 75 would be plenty.
Thank you. Victoria, any comments, questions? I think it's a point well taken that, you know, they've been a great partner to the city for a long time. It is a unique relationship we've had over the years in this process and, you know, they continue to make significant investment in the city every year. On the fact that we're made whole, even at 85% of school districts made whole is the key to that as well.
You know, ordinarily, investments like this would be ribbon cutting type situations, ground breakings, and this happens every year.
Yeah.
This is a huge economic win for the city of DeSoto every single year, but we don't really celebrate it. And so that's part of why I'm thinking, you know, I'm, I'm okay with it continuing on and it's not out of line, I think, in terms of what they're asking is. And, you know, Rob, you brought up the point that they were at least our single largest taxpayer, so we're, we're doing well with them in our community.
All right. So unless there's any other questions or discussion, I think our, our first question to, is the, regarding the issuance of IRBs and tax abatements for Resolution 2052, unless there's anybody that wants to any, offer any other comment, comment, I think, or motion.
The Resolution 2052 is, looks like it's on about.
Way down.
Yeah. Yeah, way down in the, making sure I'm looking at the right one.
I'll make a resolution, a motion, we pass Resolution 2052 determining the intent of the city.
the intent of the city of DeSoto, Kansas, to issue its industrial revenue bonds in the aggregate amount not to exceed a million dollars to finance the cost of acquiring, constructing, equipping a commercial project for the benefit of Intervet Inc. or its successors and assigns.
You could just reference the abatement.
At, at eighty-five percent abatement.
Yeah, I'll second that. All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please. Lane?
No.
MacMorran?
Yes.
Hana Michael?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, thank you. All right. Now we have an ordinance, two six three four, authorizing the issuance of.
For Intervet Inc. It's down there right below that one. I'll make a motion to approve ordinance, two six three four, authorizing the issuance by the city of DeSoto, Kansas, of not to exceed fifty million dollars aggregate principal amount taxable industrial revenue bonds, Intervet Inc. project series two zero two four, to provide funds to acquire, construct and equip the commercial project for Intervet Inc. and authorize and approve certain documents and actions in connection with the issuance of bonds.
If you could just know that the pilot will be at eighty-five percent, because the ordinance proves the pilot agreement.
Okay, including the pilot at eighty-five percent abatement. That concludes my motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion of the motion? Roll call, please. Daniels?
Yes.
Hana Michael?
Yes.
MacMorran?
Yes.
Lane?
No.
Motion carries. All right. Thank you. Moving on, we'll go to item D, discuss potential change to the election president of the city.
Yes, council, I'll take a stab at this. Just sort of as background, you know, the president of the council is, is really just, obviously, you're stepping into the place of the mayor, but as the president, you, you don't have any authority beyond your council member status. So essentially, the only thing the president does is preside at meetings when the mayor is absent. So the president doesn't sign any documents in the mayor's absence. The president can't veto, veto anything, which that rarely happens in DeSoto, but, so with that in mind and, and the discussion being brought up, I went at this with thinking that we should maybe, you know, give everybody an opportunity on the council to serve in the, as president. And so this language that I came up with as a code amendment would, each year, someone would be nominated for president based on alphabetical order of their last name, and then we would cycle through each year. So each council member would, on your term, if a particular council member did not want to serve, they can, you know, decline that and we would move to the next person based on alphabetical order of last name. And by doing that, you know, obviously it gives some order to, because otherwise, it's, it's not a mayor nomination, it's the council. So when electing a president, you know, essentially someone just tosses a name out and, and then a vote is taken. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
And I, just presenting this for, if we don't agree with what Patrick is, is proposing, we, we can offer amendments or, or document and, but I, I, I think it is good that we would have a, just a reminder or an annual, just get in our code, that we, we will look at, at annually, that was kind of the impetus to the start, that we, you know, we should, we should make sure, because we haven't been diligent about taking this item up every year. So that was, you know, code one and then, or op, objective one, and then two was just to, you know, to give everybody an opportunity. So I would offer, anybody that has questions or comments to offer, alternative language, whatever it might be, please offer them.
Yeah, I'll throw it all, so, you know, last meeting, I threw out some parameters or whatever, it was kind of my suggestion. After the meeting, the next day, Patrick got with me and I had thrown out that, you know, the mayor could nominate, you know, because you got to find some way to go, well, who's up, up next? Well, we can't do that by statute, so it's strictly within the council. The mayor can't say, oh, hey, Victoria, it's, you know, kind of your go-around or whatever. So Patrick corrected that I, that we couldn't do it that way and came up with an alternative. That, that's, that's how that part transpired.
Yeah, I like that it's.
And he actually worked it out to go, you know, because we were on two-year cycles and we would, this would actually play out that before the, you know, Victoria, you and, and Danny and Courtney come up, this would cycle all the way through. So it would just happen to work out time-wise as well.
I was gonna say, when mayor first brought this up, before I was even council president, my view was the one-year term was too short. I've talked to a lot of other communities where they have one-year terms. Yes, it's primarily a ceremonial position, but at the same time, it's also one that if something happens to the mayor, they become mayor for the fulfillment of the term, not on a rotating term by the statute. The other thing, there's numerous things here I actually don't like. And that's rotating by name, also, if you've already served, you can't serve again. It's one of those ones, I don't think that as a council, we should limit the future councils to where if there is a council member that somebody feels is appropriate as a whole council body, that they can't renominate them for that position. Two years makes a lot more sense to do it on the election cycles when new members are seated to review it at that point. So, I mean, as far as amending it, it really seems the simplest, easiest answer that keeps continuity still is simply adding that after each election cycle, it's the council votes for the council president.
I think the downside to that is in one term, only two people would have an opportunity for that. So you'd really never get that chance where, you know, somebody gets to have that, that opportunity to be council president. You always cut one out every time. Just my thought.
Yeah.
And I guess I would just throw out, so, I mean, we're supposed to elect a council president each governing body. Now, I know, you know, they're not, may not be different people in positions, but for sure, each time an election has occurred, you know, by statute, we should be electing a president. So I don't know, Rob, if you're saying we're trying to get away, we should try to get away from that.
No, I'm saying that that is what makes sense, is when the new body is seated, that they vote for the president on, on that election cycle. So when the new body is seated, then they vote.
You would still need a way to say, well, who are we voting on? So what if three people raise their hand and go, I'd like to be council president?
Then you vote on.
But then you go, how many, are you voting on? One at a time, yes, yes, you know, or do you do a ballot and you go, well, if one, if you vote for yourself plus one other person votes for you, you're in. You know, so it would only take two council members to elect the council president if you have multiple people.
Election process, yeah.
I'm just saying it's cumbersome.
It, it may be cumbersome, but election is, you nominate somebody, it's not by alphabetical order.
Well, but how does the nomination process work is what?
Somebody nominates.
Well, but what if multiple people get nominated?
Then, then you take a vote.
Well, sometime in the past, it was the reigning order of how long you've been a councilman. And that was the tradition in a lot of cities. And we don't do that here.
No, no, we don't, we don't have a practice, that's why I was throwing out, let's come up with something.
Yeah. I think we ought to come up with something different. But I'd have to think about that.
Yeah, well, that's why we're talking about it.
Yeah. But.
And that could be another way, is some sort of seniority situation.
Well, yeah, but we didn't follow that or we haven't followed that in the past. So, you know, I'm, you know, the mayor recommends or somebody, a councilman recommends.
Do the mayor recommend, yeah, you can't do that one.
And you can't do that, that's true. But, you know, it's something to be thought of and looked at.
Brandon could recommend.
I am not on board.
You're not one of that problem.
Want to stay out of that, thank you very much.
All right. Victoria, any thoughts on this?
No, I'm just taking in all the different ideas. I don't really have all options. I don't know, I don't really have one way of leaning more than the other, just trying to think about what to do.
Mayor, if I, if I may.
Sure.
There could be kind of a, something, a change to the upcoming ordinance, if there is a change where we allow for it to be at the first meeting in December or at the council's kind of prerogative of whenever they deem appropriate. That way, we wouldn't have that urgency. The current ordinance would require, would require that we would do it at the first meeting in December, which if we adopted the ordinance Patrick is suggesting would be.
The recommend, or the ordinance that's redlined here.
That's redlined here, yeah, it would be at the next meeting, which kind of creates some unnecessary.
Although we could not act on it on the next meeting.
Yeah, that's a.
And, yeah, get, get ordinance input as well.
Yeah, so it may be something where we table it and come back with a couple of different options.
Yeah.
And the terms, I think, too, we need to look at, limits, you know, like you were talking about, one year or.
Two years.
Two years or whatever, and that we need to look into too, so.
There might be an opportunity to do some kind of applied research, ask other communities, maybe.
So if, if I can just get some feedback, so are we all in agreement that each council member should be given an opportunity if they want to serve as president? Because that's what this was getting at, is to make sure that each council per, could have a shot at that, and if they didn't want it, they could just pass and say, you know, I'm not impressed that it go to the next person. So, I mean, is that something that everybody thinks is an appropriate thing, that everybody is given an opportunity to serve as president?
Well, I think it is, that, that's why I threw it out that way.
I agree with that.
But you have to do annually to be able to accommodate that.
I don't see it as a necessity, though.
Yeah.
I don't know how good about the alphabet thing, but I feel like we all have the opportunity already, but it's not that we don't.
Well, not everybody will if you do it every two years, though.
Yeah. And with the serial.
One year, though.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't say, okay, your year's up, you can't do it now, maybe they are best fit for it in the second year. I want to limit it to that, though, we just vote on it.
Yeah, because, I mean, the council's voting on it at that point, so it's the council's choice whether to reinstate them in it if they wanted it or to rotate it.
Yeah, because the only thing I would, with the serial meetings law, like, it's not like you could talk, you know, outside of the, outside of the meeting about, you know, hey, I'd like to be president or I.
You can't lock me for it.
Open discussion's a good thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a harder problem than a, than an incentive decision.
It's fair.
So I, yeah, I like, it's something that I kind of started, I don't know, I guess a year ago or so, I was looking, I did look at a number of other, several, not a number, I looked at several other communities, uh, selections or how, how a council president was determined and what those terms were. So maybe, yeah, let's just compile that research and bring it back to us and, and then we can continue the discussion, if that's all right?
Yeah, yeah.
So is this tabled or is this just administratively, we move on?
I was gonna say, it was a discussion item on the agenda.
Yeah, there's no action.
Yeah, it was just to discuss potential change to the election.
I think we have our marching orders.
Because I didn't think we were probably ready for the ordinance yet.
No, I just didn't know if you needed.
Yeah.
All right. Move on. No executive session, so we will start with advisory reports. City administrator.
Mayor, did we miss a, a gen item four E? Did we have something for, for DeSoto Investments?
Four E in the package.
IRB for.
We didn't amend the agenda to include it, so we're not going to take it up at this meeting.
Okay. Thank you, all right, thanks for that. Don't have anything to report tonight, you know, I've been, I've been out ill this week, so appreciate the opportunity to participate remotely.
Okay.
I'll answer any questions I can, thank you.
Well, you've been out for two weeks, Mike, how are you gonna answer any questions?
I know, yeah, I know, I, I've got some questions for some of you, but I'll take those offline.
All right. City attorney, Patrick, you, you, you're not here as well either, what do you got for us?
Covid. Don't want it. I don't have anything. We do have the easements app on the Sunflower Benefit District, so hoping to get those turned around and it sounds like that project's, they're ready to go pretty quick.
Okay. Brad, anything for the group tonight?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to update the council. I've been working with Johnson County on the community development block grant for the weather sirens, and we were approved to install a second siren. It's going to be at one hundred and second in Waverly, so we didn't breach the right-of-way on K-ten highway, so it all stays in the census district. So there's some additional coordination had to do with Johnson County Public Works. So that's the good news, the bad news is we're gonna have to go back through the whole bidding process, advertising, and start from ground zero. So did have the mayor also, actually had the mayor sign a letter requesting change in the scope and then also we're going to have to extend into twenty twenty-five to finish this project up, so.
Okay, so is that bidding both sirens then?
Yes.
So not just adding on the one, but?
Correct. So I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
City engineer, Joe?
Yeah, well, I guess, maybe you probably know that Lexington, at one hundred thirty, one hundred third street, both lanes traffic are open, both lanes are open from Ninety-Fifth Street all the way to Egerton. And K-Doc continues toward down the traffic circle, they're about done with that. And I think they're, probably their biggest task is to finish up sidewalks between Evening Star and Egerton. But they're still, plus scheduled to complete all the construction by the end of the year. And then earlier this evening, Everdy transported their five hundred thousand pound transformer. They started about six-thirty and got that at about seven o'clock, so it went real good. Appreciate the help from the sheriff department and helping close intersections, but it went real smooth.
All right, thank you. Brandon?
Assistant city administrator, it's easy for you to say.
I got just a couple of things, first of all, I wanted to thank Edgar for taking meeting minutes today, he stepped in last minute.
Thank you, Edgar.
Yeah, really appreciate him stepping up. And then just an update on the commissioned art piece. If you're available tomorrow at nine forty-five, the students that are going to be constructing the art piece are going to be at City Hall to kind of get a feel of scope and, and, and look at the site if you're free. They're looking input for, from staff, council, and I think they're going to go around and talk to some local business owners in the downtown district, just to kind of get a feel for what people are looking for. We are anticipating that that art piece will be delivered in July. And Patrick, just so you know, there's, the contract is kind of bouncing around School District's Legal's office, hoping to have that to the staff by next week and then by, to council by the end of the year, which kind of leads me to my next point on public art. The lease for the art piece in front of City Hall is up in December. Our policy only allows for one-year leases, so I'm hoping to get kind of a head knot around the council to allow us to do a six-month extension. to allow us to do a six-month extension of that lease. Kind of had a preliminary conversation with the artist and she's okay with basically taking half the amount. So we do $2,000 leases. She's fine doing six months at 1,000. But since it is kind of outside of policy, I just wanted to make sure you guys were okay with that. Um, and if you are, we'll kind of bring that up to the next council meeting. So seeing head nods.
Okay. I don't see anybody nodding no. So.
Perfect.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
I failed to mention, I wanted to, uh, thank Edgar for his help on those easements. My absence, uh, he helped me get the paperwork assembled. So really appreciate his efforts on that.
All right.
Yeah. And then I, I will be out tomorrow afternoon. Um, gonna set up a panel discussion with KUMPA students. So young-ish professionals is what they're calling us. We're all 10 to 15 years out. So if you're going to be at city hall, I'll be out tomorrow.
All right.
That's it.
All right. Council comments. Danny, anything for the group tonight?
Oh, I just wanted to thank, uh, Joe for his, uh, avoidance to the area, uh, that was in jeopardy. We're gonna keep away from where the sheriff was and keep away from the intersection and, uh, and appreciate the heads up, stayed away and not created any hampers. So that's all I had.
All right.
I just want to appreciate that.
Victoria?
Rob? A couple of things. One, I have my property tax bill here. Tax bills came out this week. And I'm paying less overall than I did last year. So not only did we lower ours substantially, which we are a big portion of why I'm paying less, but I've heard from several residents that theirs have gone down by, overall by subs, somewhat substantial amounts. So that's a good thing. Um, second, in, well, actually I'll tie these together. I, I'll do the one I was gonna do third. Um, Grata Development, I've had, so after they put up their planning commission or their zoning applications, and before the city council meeting, I had a almost three-hour meeting with the residents over at Bix Forest Trail, Waverly, 89th Street. We then had another meeting about a week and a half ago with the residents and the developer of Grata, where he had made changes to accommodate some of their concerns. That, uh, zoning application has been resubmitted for two of the items, being the commercial and the, uh, single-family residential. So there's been a lot of progress of working with the residents and with the developer to come to some amicability on what works and what doesn't. And in doing so, one of the things that came about was the developer in putting forth the residential zoning application was forced into the R2 district, which is single-family homes and duplexes. And one of the things that the planning commission meeting was the residents were going, okay, he says he's doing single-family homes with them. But if somebody else buys the property, we just approved it for duplexes, which we don't want. And so the developer had been asking, can we do a zone, uh, zoning application with a stipulation? Patrick wasn't favorable to that. One of the solutions is we have a R1A zoning district, which allows for smaller, single-family residential properties. The problem is it didn't get updated with the 50-foot lot size to where it's still 65-foot lot sizes to where the developer couldn't use that district, zoning, uh, district because of that. So he was forced into the R2. But the residents that were there were wanting to know that it was going to be single-family residential, not multifamily. And in doing so, the planning commission at the last meeting in October did discuss the R1A, uh, zoning as far as amending it. But in watching the discussion, the discussion really got off track because there were a couple of planning commission members that were saying, well, what if we just don't want those smaller homes, which A, our community's been asking for. But B, if they don't want those smaller homes, that's a larger issue of the comprehensive plan saying that this is able to be done in this area and this is what we're looking for and it matches the comprehensive plan. So by really getting, discussing the, what should be a comprehensive plan discussion, they really missed, in my opinion, the fact that that R1A solves an issue that the developer had, solves an issue that the residents were asking for, and that's to know that it was going to be single-family homes instead of multifamily homes. So I would request, and this is where you can say whether you'd be on board, to ask the planning commission to go back and reconsider that one, R1A addendum to allow the 50-foot lot sizes based upon what I've heard from the residents saying that that would be the, a solution that would at least placate and make sure that when they say single-family residences, that's not going to be duplexes. That's created by forcing the developer to use 50-foot lot sizes in the R2 district. So that's my other comment, which is kind of a lengthy one that has some discussion to it.
So along the lines of, um, I, I agree with, I agree with you that, um, if we're, if we're wanting a 50-foot single-family lot, I think we should have that in a single-family zoning category, right? We should, it should be, we, we shouldn't try and force it in some, that's why it, to me, it makes much more sense that we'd be a subset of the single-family zoning district that would, uh, um, allow that lot size. And, um, it's still up to the purview of the, you know, the, our planning efforts as to where that's applied in the city.
And it's still subject to site plan.
Yeah. Um, so I, I agree with you. Um, process-wise, I'm not sure. So that we didn't have a, we didn't have a, it was a text amendment that was discussed and then, um, no action. Basically no action was, or voted no or no action. I mean, Brad's no action.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Mayor, I brought that up to the planning commission and actually I wasn't at that meeting. I was out sick that day. So Mike, uh, introduced the topic, but typically what I do with the text amendment is I bring it to planning commission, get their feedback, then we schedule the public hearing. And at that meeting, uh, planning commission probably didn't want anything to do with the R1A and the 50-foot lot width. So we dropped it. Our staff dropped it. I did have discussions with you about it and then council member Daniels has, has brought it up the last few days that maybe we should take another look at it.
Okay. And I would say this would not be specifically for Grata because they've already submitted for the R2.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't be done in time for the Grata development. But as we start looking at the Southwest growth area and some of the other areas where there is potential desire for that, it makes sense to have a single-family that, which we already have the R1A, which is for that smaller. We just didn't do the text amendment to cover that R1A. So.
Kevin, did you? It was just in the R1. We do, did they reduce?
R2.
It was in R2. I was the one that, that said, let's look at a narrower lot width for affordability to begin with. That, you know, if it's, so if it's a matter of oversight or just not consideration in R1A, I don't have a problem with that. I would just say we ask the planning commission to consider an R1A.
Yeah. I, I think that when the planning commission looked at it, they, they felt that it's, they were more comfortable plugging that into the R2 for some reason.
Yeah. No, I, I think that is where, where land use is going and the narrow a lot width is what you need to, to get more density. And, you know, I can totally support that. If, if, if the planning commission were to come back.
I mean, it's, it's a couple of things, right? So you, you develop densely where you can do it. And then you, you're not developing the crease.
Right. Right.
Right?
Right. You're using more efficient, you're using more efficiently.
So that it's, uh, I'm fine with asking.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Brad, the, the R1A was the, an oversight at that point.
Yeah, it was, council member. But, because the reason, yeah, the R1A is, there is no R1A zoning in the entire city. So we talked about it, just, it's, it's never come up. It's never been used.
But it was meant for this.
We added R1A, I, I, I believe like four or five years ago, when we said, let's look at our, our zoning restrictions that make development expensive in the city. And, and we had a 90-foot minimum lot width, right?
And we went to 65 on R1A.
Lots expensive, right?
Simple. We just asked the planning commission to consider the narrow R1A.
Right. And that's kind of what I was asking is for them to take that back up with discuss, in discussion with maybe some direction from council of, we're favorable towards it or we're mixed on it or.
Well, those, I mean, their, their responsibility is to debate it on their own and not be given direction by it. That, that's not, we can ask them to look into it, but we shouldn't be directing in this way.
Yeah.
So I would agree with you. I would ask that we would ask, uh, planning commission to, to look at that again, that we, uh, take the R1A to a 50-foot minimum lot width, that it needs to be given a serious debate again.
Okay. Sounds good. I appreciate the direction.
That's all I've got. All right. Thanks. Kevin?
Got nothing.
All right. Um, I got one thing, uh, just a reminder, you all should have gotten an email today from Brandon about the council mayor, the annual holiday social at Kansas City Country Club. That RSVP deadline is before our next meeting. So just remind you all to, uh, to reach out if you're, have any interest in attending, uh, December.
11.
11. Yeah. It's our win, regular Wednesday night meeting for the council mayor. So from at our regular meeting time. So. Um, and I think really that's all I have tonight.
Make a motion adjourn.
Second.
All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Dang it. I forgot my park board appointment.
All right. They can see, we can, they can, they can, they can come sit in the meeting. We'll do it next time.
I'm just calling the meeting back to order.
Okay.
Uh, sorry about that. I would like to appoint, um, now I have to get her, Nicole, geez, grasping. I've got her, I've got her information. I had it in my email.
Nicole Graves.
Yeah. I, uh, we, we have a vacancy on the park board. Uh, Bill Miller is, uh, finally is, uh, I'm finally letting him step away after he said he wanted to step away about two years ago. Um, I've got a, a person that has agreed to fill that position, Nicole Graves. And I would like your, uh, approval to appoint, your approval of my appointment of Nicole Graves to the park commission to fill the remainder of bills.
They're moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
How much of his term is left?
It expires in July, if I remember correctly. It's a short term.
Short term. So it'll, we'll have another, we'll have a new one of that. Um, so now you get to make the motion again for the adjourn.
I'll make a motion adjourn.
All favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We're adjourned for real this time.
All right, Brandon, let's hit our grab.
Okay.